Talent that can take advantage of with a nice scholarship and success in college.
Why, I guess, why does it all matter? We have to strike a balance between what is too harsh and what is not harsh enough. We don't want to kick kids off teams. We don't want to kick kids out of groups. But we also want to hold them accountable and make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. Activities matter, whether it's athletics, whether it's robotics, whether it's band orchestra. It doesn't matter. They matter and they are important. Just a few reasons why. You know, if you're involved in any kind of activity, you're going to have a higher ACT score on average. You're going to have a higher GPA. You're more likely to graduate, you're more likely to go to college, and you're going to have better attendance and you're going to have fewer referrals. I've gotten some arguments with some people and they say, "Well, you can't actually justify this. You can't say that they're just better kids." Yeah, they are good kids, but all of our kids are good kids. It's not just our people that are involved in academics that are good kids. It's our kids that aren't involved in anything, they're good kids too. Okay? We have a bunch of good kids that do great things, but we also need to hold them accountable. Another reason why athletics and activities are important. Engagement, belonging. When kids come up to the high school, they need something to belong in, whether it's the band, whether it's some club, robotics, football, volleyball, whatever it is. When they come up as a freshman, that freshman transition is a very difficult transition for a lot of our kids. And so being able to get friends and have positive role models and coaches and sponsors is important for those kids. And then just a sense of belonging and a sense of pride in the school. Activities like what they put on for the play this weekend. Our kids have immense pride in being able to go and put on that play. They are very proud of what they did and they should be. And parents are proud and the community is proud.
So you're hoping that that pride will carry them over and help them perform better so that they don't get into that situation where they've got a key role that they take pride in, but now they're barred under this new rule from...
Yes, pride in themselves to make sure their grades are taken care of. Pride in the team, not letting the team down or the group down that they're performing with. Pride in all of that. Yeah. Reasons why kids are involved. I mean, a growth mindset. You see what our kids do from the time they're freshmen till the time they're seniors. That's what you want to see. You know, books are written on just what our kids are doing. Discipline and respect, having that self-discipline week after week to make sure grades are taken care of, that they don't get referrals, that they don't get in trouble. Teamwork, leadership. All of that stuff is a byproduct of being involved in the band or being involved in the play or being involved in volleyball or golf. And then there's more impacts just than inside our school. Of course, we do have the fact that the GPAs are higher. We just did the fall GPA in our athletic and activities groups. GPA was a 3.2. The school as a whole was a 2.8. So we know that it is higher. Last year when I ran the numbers on ACTs, our average ACT was a 21.9. That's higher than the state average.
Do you think these standards get more students into that activities category or less students?
Are you asking if I think students will not do activities because of the grade? No, I think they're going to do activities because they want to be involved. And I think, you know, we need to grow our activities. We need to, you know, we need to offer more things, offer more clubs, offer more of those things that kids can fit into when they come up to the high school.
Yeah, and I'm not arguing any particular point.
Yeah.
But it's, you want them to rise to the occasion. There are certainly examples where because of, whatever, embarrassing event or the struggle with that math class, that they're outstanding in a performing art. You just gotta keep kids engaged.
Oh, exactly.
You gotta encourage them to engage. I get the high bar. I think we've got to raise the bar. But I'm really concerned that this policy shuts doors more than it opens doors.
Yeah, and I can see where you're going. The one thing I'll say is we haven't...
I want to be convinced differently.
We haven't had one student leave the band because of the extra rigors put on them academically. We haven't had somebody leave the band because of that. Our coaches, I'm not in favor of kicking kids off teams because they're failing classes. I'm not in favor of them playing and representing Garden City High School, but they need to stay on the team, need that connection and that bond and that oversight. But the best...
Just to be clear, this includes an evening performance at the school by that class.
Anything...
If they're not meeting it, then they can't perform because they don't have the grade.
Anything representing Garden City High School, yes.
They're representing us during the day too.
Not in front of the public.
And Mark, I'm going to throw the other side out here. Having these standards will also, I think, create a platform or opportunities to support kids to work towards those grade levels. So they'll be encouraged to be in those activities. That may not necessarily have been in those activities because that support wasn't there to help them monitor their grades or have the tutoring. So I think it may encourage an increase.
Yeah, but that's a good point. One of the things about the football program that's been outstanding, I think, particularly in the past, but probably it's the same policies I believe, is the scaffolding is provided to those students that in order to play, they've got a study hall, they've got something specific that the coach requires them to do. So I totally agree. And I think that's how people rise to the occasion, is to have that opportunity. Not just the rule, but the relationship.
Exactly.
Rules without relationship is rebellion.
I mean, to your point, the football team on their eligibility roster had 168 student athletes who were managers. When I ran the grade report two weeks ago, they had two kids that didn't meet standards. And that didn't mean they were eligible.
And they're doing a study hall, right?
And they do the study hall two days a week, Coach Hill. And all our coaches, I shouldn't say all, a lot of our coaches do this. We have the nighttime or the evening study hall. They'll send kids in for practice to go to study hall and not to football practice. Because if they don't have grades and they can't play, they're going to be to them anyway. You know, they need to take care of that first and foremost.
And I'd say Coach Tone and I, I think I have, at least I've tried, I think I've kind of made my name in the school, at least for the kids, by being pretty pro-kid and pretty pro-opportunities for kids. Expanding programs like robotics, expanding programs like theater and doing some different types of things. And I wouldn't do something that I thought kept kids away. And so I'm absolutely, I'm right beside you on that thought. Right beside you on that. I wouldn't do that. If we thought this was going to keep kids from having opportunities, I wouldn't be behind it. And that's why I met with each of those sponsors after their fall sets of concerts and activities and said, "Okay, tell me, what was the impact?" You know, and they, each of the heads of the programs thought it was having a positive impact. They thought it was doing great things. They could see their eligibility lists of kids going down and down and down, especially comparing it one year to the next. Because we give them failing reports, we were giving them failing reports even last year when they weren't subject to a policy. We were just telling them, "Hey, these are the guys in your program that are struggling. We need to get them some help." And now they can see they don't have near as many kids that are needing that. And so we want to try to provide those tutoring opportunities. We've got teachers volunteering to do the tutoring. The grace period is something that I made sure when we kept the grace period in there too, so we wouldn't catch a kid. And, you know, if we keep studying this and we find out that all of a sudden we have, instead of 189 kids in our marching band, we only had 150 because we thought kids were running away from the higher academic standard, then we would definitely look at this again.
And don't get lost in that stuff though, I would encourage you. Because two or three kids with a tragic circumstance here because of rules, without the proper scaffolding or relationship, make terrible decisions. But they just do. And I mean, it can be depression, it can be a lot of different things. You guys know that.
That can snowball.
You know, so, you know, there's going to be a few. And you just got to err, I think, on the side of not only what you do is wonderful, to raise the bar, but gullum, jag other programs, you know, get them the resources they need to have personal pride, as opposed to coming down to that one moment in that week and then the band publicly humiliating them. That's not good for anyone.
No, I think we agree wholeheartedly.
The biggest, the scariest time for us is right now. You're in between a fall season and a winter season. And now, as you know, with kids, now those kids may not have that constant contact with our sponsors or coaches. One play may have just got over, the same kids may not be in the next play. So this is, and we'll see it. And we'll see an increase, a bubble in our eligibility report because it's not that constant, you know, banging on the drum, making sure they're taking care of their grades because our coaches have been separated, you know, for some of our sports, three weeks, for some, one week. But we'll start to see that. And that's where, that's why we need them to constantly stay involved in activities. That's the end points of activities, is just always pulling at them, pulling the man saying, "Let's go."
That is so true. You know, once you lose a kid, it's not worth it in high school. It's tough to turn that attitude around.
Well, that's it. You know, I've had some people ask me, "Well, why don't we kick them off? If they're ineligible twice, why don't we kick them off the team?" I just, I can't get behind that because I know a lot of good kids that have been through some bad circumstances or made a couple poor decisions, that all of a sudden they're off the team, they're out of the group, and then we don't have anything. Then they're just floating around the high school not connected to the team.
I still don't see why letting them be up on stage, maybe they're not the best violinist, but letting them be on stage with then having that extra requirement as opposed to excluding them from being on stage and instead writing the paper. For a kid that doesn't write papers very well, that, you know, this is a curriculum area and just because they have a performance, you're saying, "No can do." And that just doesn't make sense in my mind. I can't wrap my mind around how that makes sense. So I appreciate all your work.
Maybe it makes sense, Mark, because you're trying to reorganize the priorities. I mean, this is the argument that I've been making over and over, which is the activities and the sports are glorified to the extent that I think not only the kids, but the parents lose the perspective of what's important in those kids' lives. So if you have glory on the athletic field and you can't write that paper and you're worried about withholding them from the stage or something, maybe you're actually telling the kid, "To be able to write the paper is more important than being on that stage or being out on that football field." And it's a mindset that, again, I think we pour a lot of our resources into activities. And I'm not arguing against activities. I don't disagree with anything that we said.
The row standards are certainly for arts, performing arts, is important, is a part of it.
Well, I change the standardization for all of the activities. I mean, I'm surprised that it hasn't been standardized before. I fully support the ideas generally. You want to participate in an activity, I consider it a privilege. And so if you want to participate in an activity, you got to meet some minimum standards and some minimum involvement. And I, all of you have kids, okay? And I sincerely doubt that you would let your kids participate in activities if they weren't held to a certain conduct and a certain level of performance academically. I know both of your kids. I have a question though. Would you let them participate if they had an F in any one class?
What I'm responding?
In other words, you have just made the argument that I have been trying to make, which is if you raise a bar, you will get better performance. So I'm asking you, why don't you raise that bar just a tiny bit higher and say, "You can't have any Fs"? And if I'm the teacher and this student is performing at an F level in my class and they're still missing my class for out-of-town activities, what am I being told as the teacher? Which one is more important? The activity or my class? Because if you say to the kid, "I'm sorry, but you can't go out of town with any Fs", then you're giving both the teacher and the student the message that when you have to choose between your time, your resources, and your talent, you have to choose academics first. And we, as a board, have to choose between academics and activities when we make financial decisions. We are not unlimited with the amount of finances that we have.
And this goes beyond that. This policy goes beyond that because it applies to activities in that building. They just happen to be after hours. And that's what really, to me, is unsettling. But I agree with raise the bar if, well, there's just not a political...
I'd be curious to know how many people sitting here and whether you two gentlemen would allow your kids to participate in an activity if they were given that.
I'll do a scenario just from this year, if you will. We have a number of college courses taught on campus through Garden City Community College. One of the classes, there's maybe nine grades all semester. So a kid that failed that initial test, that first test, if they vomit, that means, and they take it three weeks into the semester, it may be another four weeks before they even take another test. So their grade is a 52% all the way until that next test comes. It's not like us from the aspect that we demand that our teachers put in grades weekly. You know, that's an expectation that we have, that grades are put in weekly so that a student that may not be doing well at least has opportunities to improve grades. Some classes aren't necessarily like that.
Well, sometimes you have set policies, if they're good ones, that catch most of the kids and some people just lose.
And we try to balance, yeah. We try to find a balance. And I don't want any kid to, like I said, like I said earlier, not perform because of it. That's why I did sit down with those sponsors and say, "Okay, what? What was the impact? How did it go?" And we'll keep doing that. You know, originally after nine weeks, they were pretty positive about things so far, especially with their number of kids who were no longer failing as they did a year ago. But yeah, we tried to find a balance.
I feel like the goal on this is you providing a scaffolding and a support there. So it comes down to if the kid isn't making his benchmarks, it's responsibility. It's their self-responsibility or their motivation that they're putting into it. So it's, if they're willing to put in the effort, even if maybe they're behind on their academic knowledge, they'll work towards that. The opportunity's there for them to keep those goals. And if they don't, most likely, or I hope, it's simply because they haven't learned to put in that effort yet.
Certainly not every student is where you or I. And Jean, you have?
I do have some comments. I believe that this policy attempts to apply the same standards to students in two very different situations. It applies to students who are in activities that are voluntary and optional as well as those students who are in classes and are attempting to complete requirements of that class. And for that reason, I don't like part of this policy. I agree students should be in activities that benefit them and for those optional and voluntary types of activities, I think it's a great policy. I don't like that it restricts students who are trying to participate in required class activities from participating in those activities.
It's the curriculum. We're going to strike the curriculum.
It's part of it. Students, for example, who are denied the opportunity to participate in a band concert when they're enrolled in band, writing a review of the concert is not the same as actually performing in that concert. And I appreciate that you discussed this with some of the performing arts teachers that have quick performance requirements in their curriculum and in their syllabus. But I think it's detrimental to those students to be denied that opportunity. I think it's punitive in a way to those students. And I think that, as we go forward, there should be some clarification between students who are in those voluntary, optional activities and students who are completing class requirements. And whether that means that they're allowed to do that despite the fact that they're in front of the public to do a band concert or a choir concert or whether you are asking your staff to maybe reassess what mandatory class requirements there are. I just think that needs to be adjusted. I don't think we should be lumping these two groups together and have one policy that has a different impact on each of them.
Other comments in the board? I'm sorry, did I cut you off?
No, you're fine.
Okay, other comments?
For me, I feel like you're learning a life skill, having to put things together for the end game. So if you participate in a concert, even though it's a class requirement, that's the prize. You know, every day going to learn, that's the work. But the concert or the singing performance, that's the prize. And every day in our everyday life, we have to make sure that everything's in line to get to the prize, whether it's your paycheck or, you know, a trip or whatever that prize is. Several things have to come together and have to align. And so we're teaching those, we're teaching students in school that everything has to align to get to the prize. I like this and I would like it even more strict because I don't think you should fill any class. I think that there's enough, you guys have talked about all the different supports that students can have. I don't know a teacher who wouldn't be willing to work with a student before or after class or during lunch. I've just never heard of a teacher unwilling to help a student succeed in a class. So for me, this just, it's a life skill that we're teaching kids. Everything has to be in order to get to the prize. And that, whatever that is, the games, the concert, you know, whatever the prize is for extracurricular activities. So for me, I feel like this is a great policy. And I commend the district and you guys for holding the standard even higher than KESHA. Because that's unbelievable to me that they're basing what students do a semester ahead of time and so this semester doesn't matter at all. And I think that sends a bad message to students, teachers, and just the activities themselves because academics should always be our priority, so.
And in talking with, I mean, just so you guys know, in talking with some of the other 6As, you don't see a lot of smaller schools. Most people do a week-by-week grade check, but there are a lot of 5 and 6A schools that do a semester-by-semester, just like KESHA. And it just scares them to death because you get to the end of that semester and nobody has been watching those kids all semester long and then all of a sudden, there's this pile of kids that they're scrambling right at the end of the semester where this maintains throughout the semester where coaches and sponsors can constantly stay in contact with those kids. And it doesn't, for our sponsors and for our coaches, it makes them build more relationships. It makes me build more relationships with kids. You know, when I see kids in the hallway that might be on the list, I'll go, "Hey, you know, what's going on? What can we do to help you? What's taken care of?" You know, and encourage them to go to the study halls, see the teachers. We, Mr. Gordon mentioned the after-school study hall. We have the before-school study hall. We have the morning, the breakfast bunch in the mornings. And then we have after-school study hall. You know, even some of our upper-level classes, they're, you have Patrick Doobins on Saturday and Sunday. Mr. Glass has portions of kids in there doing chemistry or AP or, you know. We do offer quite a few supports, but we can offer more. I know we can do more.
And Mark, Jean, I know what you're saying. I was that kid in high school. I was that kid who needed that stuff. So I do have that kid in mind. And that's why we made sure to put a grace period in there. That's why we made sure that if we were going to put this in, we were going to have those opportunities before school, after school, to get the help you needed to get there. So yeah, I was that kid. And so those kids are in my heart and in my mind too. And, you know, I wouldn't do something that I thought hurt kids like that because, you know, that was my hook, that was my thing. And so I completely empathize with what you're saying. And that's why I continue to talk with those sponsors. We're going to meet each nine weeks and talk about the impact. They're going to bring me their numbers. How many kids? How many kids could not perform? Why? What was the deal? What I found for the fall for some programs is more kids couldn't perform. For some programs, more kids couldn't perform due to disciplinary issues in grades. And, you know, that's, I'm going to keep having those discussions. I promise that I would put a policy in that didn't have that grace, that grace period because I know, I don't want one thing to hammer a kid.
And this has been an evolving thing. One thing that we had to do, we've had some long-term subs that have been in flux over the past couple of years. And one other thing that we do is if a kid's failing in class and the teacher hasn't put a grade in within the last two weeks or not caught up on grades, we don't count that class. If the teacher's not holding up their end of the bargain, we're not going to hold the kid accountable because the teacher's not necessarily holding up their end of bargain.
Now, some of those grades, aren't they Fs until they get it in? And some kids have run into that. When the TELA grade comes in, it's an F.
And that's why we meet with those kids. "Hey, what's the story here?" And if the student says, "Well, hey, I turned it in, but it just hasn't been graded yet. And I turned it in last week and it's been a week and they still haven't graded it", then we may not count that grade against the student because the student's done their part. So we take them individually.
Kids have options.
Just some clarifications for me, if you may. Tell me, how does the report go to you all, knowing that I'm failing the class? Who gives, how do you do that?
So what we have is through Skyward, through our grading system, we'll go through and we'll put individual kids, you know, if they're in robotics or dance or band or forensics, they get a little tab that says forensics or band.
So whatever group they're in.
And so they get placed in a group, exactly. They get placed in a group and what we do is we run an initial report on Monday night. So we let the teacher put in all these grades, you know, weekends are big for our teachers. We let these teachers go and enter all these grades on Sunday and Monday morning. And then Monday night, we run a grade report. And that report comes out and it goes, it's this first. Football gets third grades, band gets third grades, art club gets third grades. And I get a list of all of them, you get a list of all of them. But each individual coach gets all those grades on Monday night. And then on Friday, the last graded report comes out that is toward the following week. So they get a kind of a warning on Monday night.
So if I'm a sponsor, I get my twelve kids that are in my club. And say, "Okay, these two have an F. We got an imbalance out there, they can't participate."
No, so you'll get the grade report on Monday night. And then if they're still on the grade report on Friday, then they can't. They can't do anything with the following, starting Monday to fall.
So we give them a warning shot, I guess, on Monday to say, "Hey, Drew, you're failing physics and you're failing math. You can't participate next week if one of those grades isn't up by Friday." So the student gets Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday to get their work all caught up and done. And then the second report comes out Friday. If he's on both, he's out for the next week.
Because it's like Mark said, the kid may have turned in homework late work and maybe the teacher just hasn't put the homework really with him. And so that gives the kid an opportunity to think, "Hey, I need to go get this taken care of and see what's going on and check on it."
But if a student gets an F on a test, there is nothing they can do until they get another test, correct?
Well, so for high school classes, there is because we're going to have daily work. We're going to have just normal assignments. For some of our college classes, they may only have five grades and it just may be five tests. And that's where... And that's where problems arise sometimes.
That's what, that's.
That's why we've got that, that to do, not only the grace period, but the requirements, you know, if the teacher just hasn't entered a grade in for quite a while, we don't count that grade. We're not gonna state the kid.
And for having that asset, I mean, you're obviously addressing the teacher.
We address the teacher. We tell them, "Your grade will not be used for eligibility this week. You haven't met our standards for entering, entering grades."
And in our last report, maybe we received a, a list of school clubs and activities. There are fifty-one clubs and twenty-one sports, boys and girls. So, am I understanding this right? So, this policy you developed is for all fifty-one clubs and all twenty-one sports? Is that correct?
If they travel outside of the school, they leave the school day, or do a performance. Yes, now, the writing club may not do any of those. So, a student may not be.
But if I look at some of these clubs, so some of these clubs meet once a month.
Yeah.
And they have an event once a quarter, maybe two a quarter. You know, and some of the events, so the one I'm looking at right now is Halo. You know, good civic, good civic club, teaching leadership, teaching civic engagement, teaching volunteerism. So, what those kids are doing a lot of times, they're doing stuff on the weekend, volunteering something, leadership, you know? So, if I'm a kid in that club, and that's the only club I wanna be in, 'cause I'm not athletic, I'm not smart, my, my friends are in Halo, I'm not doing very well in school, now, now you're telling me I can't participate on the weekend, because I have an F in math or whatever. And you talk about.
Not one F, two Fs.
Two Fs. See, but again, they, they only meet, you know, probably do things every other one in the community. So, you know, that impacts them, versus a kid in football that's playing, what, eight games, you know, and it's all, every weekend.
So, the thing I'll say, Tim, is they get one get-out-of-jail-free card. So, they're, they're gonna be able to go to one of the events, because they get their get-out-of-jail-free card, in essence. And then they have time, they should know, "All right, I'm gonna get, others are getting going on this."
Yeah, and I guess I have this, this mixed emotions on, on the policy. 'Cause you talk about study hall in the morning, study hall in the after-school.
And then we have mentoring during the day, for those that can't necessarily.
But how do you reach out to those kids? I, I need a study hall, and I, I never went and asked the teacher, "Hey, will you help me?" There were teachers I knew, "I'm gonna get an F." No teacher said, "Hey, stay after school, I'll, I'll," you know?
That's why those club activity, clubs, activities and, and sports, and, and they're important, because the, the Halo sponsor, they're gonna have Halo meetings, and Halo is gonna get a grade report on all those kids. And so, that sponsor, being the sponsor, they need to be reaching out to those kids, saying, "Hey, Johnny, what's going on here?" You know, and staying in contact, and like Mark said, building those relationships with those students.
Like I say, I have mixed emotions on it. I, you know, first presentation, I guess I wanna think more about it, maybe ask you guys more questions as I sleep on it, you know? I, I think you're doing good stuff. I think, I agree with our plan, you know, it's more than a kid give the grades, you know, but, you know, if a kid can say, "And I'm not joining that club, 'cause, you know, I know my grades aren't that good, and you're gonna be down my throat, and, you know, you're gonna kick me off the team, I just won't participate, you know, I'm not doing anything in big high school yet," you know? And I don't wanna see that either, and neither do you guys, so.
But, Tim, I'd like to hope that any kid in, in Gerson High School that's getting two Fs, there's someone's communicating with them, whether they're in an activity or not.
Well, that's, you know, I guess that's.
And this is just opens up another, that's another person.
You know, I don't have high schools, too, so I don't know that, you know? And that's why I have to.
I don't know if that's your policy, but I feel like, if there's any kid that's failing classes, I hope someone on the staff is in contact with them.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd say I had one that was very much talented, and he adapted all according to what you taught him. And doing great in college right now, but didn't respond well to these kind of policies. And, you know, there's reasons for that, but, and there are other kids I'm aware of that might have the same result. But for you and your position, and what we're trying to achieve in that high school, I'm not sure what the alternative is. Because you've got a strategy here, and you've certainly got a strategy with that child's best interest in mind. As long as that scaffolding is there, as opposed to you're out, or, you know, as long as those, those conversations are being had, those are opportunities for those conversations. So, that's a good thing here. You could just, I'm still trying to wrap my mind around, when you've got a curriculum in there, it involves the performing art, and now we're gonna sweep in because of other performing in other classes and say, "You can't do that." I'm, I'm still working on that, and I'll be real interested in, in the data. You guys are, it's an opportunity for being data rich in your approach, so hopefully we can revisit this later and see how it's going. I appreciate everybody's comments. We do need to move along. About Steve?
So, you, you mentioned the, kind of the response by your sponsors.
Yeah.
What kind of responses did you have from parents since this went into effect?
I haven't spoken to anybody one way or another on this, as far as, as moms and dads. It's, it's only been the first nine weeks. I haven't heard from really anybody, moms and dads either way on this.
I have, but I'm steering it to the good minds that are up there.
I have, I have heard from parents, you know? I, I really haven't. I've heard, I've heard more the other way, you know? About, or, you know, asking what our grade pol-, how our grade policy works, but not, not specifically about, about those.
I've been talking all the time about supporting teachers in this department. Do you think there's value in reaching out and actually asking the faculty on how it's doing?
Yeah, I do. And then when, when you asked that, I made a note to, to do that. Absolutely.
Gentlemen, thank you so much for what you do, for your time this evening.
Well, thank you. It, it's, it's something that, well, I went through the timeline. This is, this is not something that just happened like that. This is seven years, six and a half years in the making of, of our discussion, so, you know, I, I certainly hear where you're coming from, though, I do, 'cause I, in a lot of ways, my high school career, I lived in. So, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Board open discussion.